Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for joining us at our second town hall of this academic year. Ryan, let's put our agenda up for today, so folks will know what we're going to be talking about. I'm going to present for about 20 minutes, plus or minus, and then we will answer your questions, and we can stay here as long as we need to, up until 2 o'clock this afternoon, if that's necessary. This next slide reminds you how to ask a question. Use the Q and A feature on Zoom during the presentation. Of course, you're always welcome to send me an email, and I'll respond offline. On the Q and A session, again, please do not put comments in the Q and A. It makes it more challenging for the folks managing through the questions to get to the questions. And as always, you can vote up a question that somebody else has put in that you like. And as always, let's begin by seeing who's on the call. We have 402 people on the call. And so tell us which category you're in. Staff, faculty, administrator, student, other, if you're a community member, or parent, or interested party, you'd hit the other block. So go ahead and vote. We'll give you about 15 seconds to do that. All right, Andrea, let's see who we have. There, 258 staff members, 66 faculty members, 20 administrators, 19 students, and eight other people. Again, thanks for joining us today. Our first topic is going to be an enrollment update. Typically, this is the time that we would do the State of the University address. Census was last Monday, and we would give folks an update on enrollment, so I thought it was important to do that today. Overall, we're down 2.3% compared to last fall, which frankly is pretty darn good, given that this is the third academic year in a row we've been in a pandemic. All of our higher ed institutions in southwest Missouri are down, many more than we are. That includes Missouri Southern, Crowder and OTC, our community college partners are down, as well as Drury and Evangel. Thanks to everyone who has worked hard to minimize our enrollment loss. Really, really good work by our folks all across the academic spectrum, working in the graduate enrollment area, where we hit a record. The most graduate students we've ever had are attending Missouri State this semester, 4,183. And so to our deans and Julie and the provost's office and others, working nicely done. We also did very well in the dual credit sector, and then international programs, as you've seen there, has taken a good bit of a bounce back. Many of those students are attending from other places and are not physically present on campus. But Brad Bodenhouse and his team have done a really good job keeping those partnerships alive. And many of those students, we hope, will be joining us in January, certainly by August. Freshman class is also solid. 2531. And particularly given the circumstances and recruiting, when in July and August, we were leading the world in COVID cases. I think that's a really good number. The big concern for me on this chart, though, is the loss of 902 more undergraduate students who did not return to the university as compared to last year. Many were freshmen who didn't come back, as our retention rate has dropped. We can see that on the next slide. Our retention rate has dropped to where it was in 2014. Ryan, can you pull that up? There we go. But others did not return as well. This is concerning, for we know how education changes lives, and if these students don't return or enroll elsewhere, their lives are likely to be changed for the worse. It's also concerning from a revenue standpoint. You know, we expect to have a little, almost $8 million less revenue than budgeted this year as a result of this decline. Typically, that would mean things like budget cuts or hiring freezes, but because we have the federal money that can be used to replace this revenue loss, no budget reductions will be necessary for the year that we're in. However, we will have to rebound in enrollment next year. FY '23, or significant budget adjustments may very well be necessary. And this kind of revenue loss can impact compensation and program expansion and tuition, et cetera. Every college was down, although not every program within every college saw decreases, and not all decreases were in the same magnitude. My bottom line for this is, we will need everyone working together to turn this around, but I believe we can. As we come out of the pandemic, and as we expand our academic programs and reinvent our scholarship program and how we do things, I'm confident that we can come out of this strong, and that our report next year will be more like those we are used to seeing on campus. Second topic, our COVID-19 update. And so there's some really good news here. The number of cases, hospitalizations, and positivity rate in Green County have dropped significantly since the peak in July. And this chart, a little bit of a busy chart, but it's got all three semesters of the pandemic in here. And so the line at the top was fall a year ago. And you'll remember, we started the fall semester with lots of positive cases, mostly students. 141, second week, 383, et cetera. Sixth week, 56, for example, and then we were mostly in the 50s and 60s for the rest of that semester. The blue line was spring semester of last year. We started at 60, and then we were able mostly to keep it in single digits for the rest of that semester, as the pandemic seemed to be phasing out before the Delta variant arrived. The red numbers are where we are this year, this semester. Very good. So the highest we've had in any single week was 24, and last week, we were down to 3. And we're still testing 350 to 700 people a week. And so those are consistent numbers with the other semesters. And so in terms of how we're doing on campus, the numbers are very good this semester. Let's go to the next slide. This is, again, this is one of our three key metrics. Let me remind you of what those are, right? Positivity rate, cases per day, and cases per week over 100,000. And so this is one of the things we track for Green County to help us manage our decision. And so you will see positivity rate this semester is very good. And all but for Week 4, we've been under the positivity rate for Springfield. Positivity rate for Springfield is about 5%. And so again, you'll see that we are doing another indicator that we are doing really well on campus. Our third kind of campus indicator is housing. Again, we have all three semesters charted here. And so last week, we ended the week with three students in quarantine or isolation in Kentwood. Again, very low, small numbers, particularly compared to fall a year ago. So then we go to Green County. And let's see what's happening in Green County. And for all of us that live here, we know this inherently, whether you look at the charts every day or not. But last year, as the semester went on, particularly into November, December, January, February, we had significant numbers. Our daily case average was over 400. I think it peaked somewhere north of almost 600 cases over a seven-day average in that timeframe. And then it happened again, right? Right before school started. We had another peak in July. And then since July, you have seen the cases that have been coming down. And so currently, we are at 43 cases a day. That's an important number. We'll come back to that in a minute. 43 cases a day. Let's go to the next slide. And so this is the third metric that we track. We track cases per day. We track cases per 100,000 people. And we track positivity rate, right? Those are the metrics that decide how we're managing through the pandemic and what our policies should be, per the CDC. And so again, on this kind of average, you see, in January, we hit our all-time high. Seven-day case rate per 100,000 people, we were at 608. We got very close to that again, in the middle of July, where we were at 565. We're now down as of Friday to 104. And we have not yet gotten today's numbers. They should come out sometime this afternoon. Again, David Hall, working with Green County Health Department, tracks all of those. And so that brings us to our, oh. And here's our positivity rate. I told you a little bit about that. Our positivity rate is down to 5.07% in Springfield. Again, we've been significantly higher than that over the time. Now, so why do we care about these three indicators, right? Cases per day, cases per week over, per 100,000 people, and positivity rate. Because we adopted our indoor masking policy based on CDC and Green County Health Department recommendations, because our county was in a high transmission area. And so the key metrics that say Green County is a high transmission area are cases per day. Do we have over 40? Well, we're at 43, so we're just slightly into that area as of Friday. Cases per 100,000, are you over 100? We're at 104, so we're just slightly over that. And then positivity rate, are you over 10%? We're way under that. We're at 5%. So as of Friday, two of our metrics, we were just into the high rate. We expect by today or tomorrow, certainly by the end of the week, we will be under the high rate in both cases per day and cases per 100,000 people. And we've been under the high rate, frankly, under the substantial rate for several weeks now in terms of positivity. So as we make policy decisions based on the guidance of the CDC and the Green County Health Department, and as it was these numbers that caused us to follow their direction. Hey, if you're in an area of high transmission, you need to have an indoor masking policy, regardless of vaccine. We are coming out of that now. And so with fall break being this week, we thought this was a good time to adjust our masking policy at the halfway point of the semester. And so our plan is that we will move from a masking indoors everywhere, regardless of vaccination status policy, to a masking requirement in academic buildings, in clinics, and in classrooms only. Here's the list. So masks, beginning on Monday, a week from today, masks will be required to be worn in our academic buildings. And you see them listed here. They're still will be required to be worn in all of our clinics. Majors, MSU Care, physical therapy, et cetera, et cetera. We have seven or eight. And in classrooms in non-academic buildings. And so in Carrington, for example, we have a big classroom on the second floor. Still a requirement to wear a mask in that classroom, but not otherwise in the building. This policy will go into effect Monday, October 11th, and it's our plan to finish the semester with this policy in place. That means, beginning October 11, masking will no longer be required indoors at the Student Union, in dining and residence halls, in the Foster Family Rec Center, in Carrington Hall, except in the big classroom, in the library, except in specific designated places, and in athletic and entertainment venues. The Child Development Center and Greenwood will set their own policies and have decided to continue to require masking indoors. I expect that to last the remainder of the semester as well. We've discussed this policy with and received input from our academic and administrative leadership teams, other education institutions, our healthcare and health department leaders, as well as faculty, SGA, and staff senate leadership. That input improved the updated policy that is now posted on the COVID website as of today. We will also be sending everybody an email tomorrow, faculty, staff, and students with a link to the policy and summarizing what I'm talking about right now. This policy is similar to the policies Drury, OTC, and the four University of Missouri campuses have been operating under for the entire semester. And they have had good experience with it, very limited COVID cases on those campuses as well. We have not eliminated the masking requirement completely, because some of the metrics still place Green County in an area of substantial transmission. And we don't know what the winter months will bring, as people spend more time indoors, and we don't want to be changing policies multiple times. All right, I'm sure you'll have questions over that. David Hall and others will be happy to answer those, as will I, when we get there. Our final topic today is vaccinations. So here's the slide that shows our vaccination rates on campus. There we go. And so really good news here. Last week, we went over 80% of our full-time employees without any mandate. And that's really good work. I'm very proud of that number. But what that means is, we still have 381 full-time employees on the Springfield campus who are unvaccinated. Now, I don't know who you are unless you've told me your status, because I don't look at your health record. And I, but I do want to talk to those 381 people now, just for a minute. And I want to encourage you, again, to consider becoming vaccinated. It's safe and effective. It's frankly going to be necessary to live a full life and to be employed, potentially at the university or many other places. And there are many places you will not be able to go unless you are vaccinated. Many restaurants, shows, concerts on both coasts, and in big cities have this requirement now. The federal government has issued directives for large employers, like the university, and for employers with government contracts, again, like the university, to mandate vaccination. It's also mandated that all healthcare workers, like those working in our clinics, be vaccinated. We are awaiting guidance on these directives now. Here's the bottom line, folks. I may not be the decision-maker on this. This decision to require vaccines may very well be taken out of our hands, because we're a government contractor, because we're an employer of more than 500 people. It is likely to be required to travel by air. You know, if you're an airline employee, almost all the airlines have mandated it. It's likely to be required to go into federal buildings or military bases. And as you know, there is a benefit financially, getting vaccinated for COVID and the flu will save you $360 on your health insurance premiums next year. Again, let me encourage you. We don't have a mandate now. And we won't have one unless it's imposed upon us by the federal government. But that could happen. And so let me encourage you to contact majors, schedule an appointment for both your shots. Gail and I got our third shots last week, and we're both doing great. So with that, I'm gonna, we'll take the slides down. Oh, here's, I have a question. Remember, use the Q and A feature, or send me your comments, or thoughts, or questions offline at president@missouri state.edu. Let's pull our panel up. And we are happy to take your questions. We have 547 people on the call. And we have our health experts, David Clayren, David Maggie, David Hall on the call with us. Once again, Suzanne will be managing the questions. And so Suzanne, are most of the questions connected to COVID?
They are. And I think now is a good time to just mention that we do have the COVID page, which is available from the landing page of our website. There's a call to action button. Most of your questions that are here are answered in the policy or on the dashboard. But we'll go ahead and answer them, just because we know it's all new, and it helps to kind of hear it again. So we'll start off with, are we allowed to ask people to wear masks in our offices?
In a personal office?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
Okay. The bear claws in Meyer Library acts as a classroom. Is it okay that we continue to enforce a masking policy?
Only if a classroom is meeting. Only if a class is meeting.
Okay. What percentage of total students, not just those living on campus, are vaccinated, or what is the percentage they're vaccinated? I just looked on the dashboard, and it's, I think, about 39.2%, but David, is that changed?
Yeah, so I've got it pulled up. It's 39.42%. That is the amount of students that we have documented are vaccinated. Again, many of these students live literally all over the world, all over the United States. We assume that many have not, despite our urgings, turned in their documentation. But the percentage of our students in Springfield, who we can confirm are vaccinated, is right at 40%.
Okay. Will majors be providing the opportunity to get the booster shot?
Yes, you can do it now. Just go on to the majors, log in, and pick a time. Dr. Maggie, what else should they know about that?
It's going very well. We've been giving the third-dose booster shots to those who meet the CDC criteria since about middle of August, and it's going very well. Last week, we gave 371 COVID vaccinations to majors, the majority of which were third-dose, some were second, and very few were first. But we've been doing it, and we've expanded it, consistent with CDC guidance. And we're vaccinating every day this upcoming week. So as President Smart says, just sign up, come on over. We're glad to help you.
Thank you. If it's still important to mask in classrooms and academic buildings, why would it not still be important to mask in other buildings where there are people who are congregating?
Yeah, so so my goal, anyway, is to have the least restrictive policies that get the job done. And the University of Missouri has had very similar numbers to ours while using exactly the same policy that we're going to. So I think we're giving up very little in terms of the safety of our employees. And, you know, just as the numbers are dictated that we go to a masking policy, the numbers are going to dictate that we come off. And, you know, we're gonna be, we would be below all of these numbers likely by the end of October or early November, such that we could come off completely. We thought middle of the year was a good place to go to a compromise, so that we're not on one week and off another week and on one week, based on, are we slightly above or slightly below the numbers? But rather have a consistent policy. The other thing I would say is, with the ability to have the third shot and to have this kind of super protection available, we thought now is also a good time to move to that. And with the number of cases going down significantly, we thought this was a good time to do it as well. We also have the, you know, we also have the ability to wear the N95 mask, which is very, provides a lot of protection for the people wearing it. We can't just say we're gonna wear masks forever, guys. We just can't. This is gonna be with us, maybe for the rest of our lives. And so we need to transition as close to back to normal as the data allows us to do.
Thank you. With regard to shared workspaces without walls that separate employees, is it recommended that masks be worn by those who work closely together in these spaces? And would they be able to make a decision to ask everyone there to mask?
Yeah, so we're going to individual decisions in workplaces outside of classrooms. And so obviously, if everyone in your workplace wants to mask, they can. But you can't insist that other employees mask. They're gonna get to make that decision for themselves.
Okay. Will student employees who are not vaccinated be required or asked to wear a mask while working in campus offices?
No.
We've scheduled an event in the PSU Ballroom that will have a large number of people, 100-plus, coming from other parts of the country, as well as our students attending. Can we require attendees to wear a mask to enter the event?
No.
Let's see. When I asked about masking at the Child Development Center this summer, I was told that the university makes this decision. Has this now changed? 100% of the students in attendance there are not eligible to be vaccinated? So what guidance is being followed to protect the children?
As I said in the presentation, in our policy, we've carved out the Child Development Center because of that very reason, to make its own policy. And so they have required masking for this semester that will continue at least through the end of the semester. But again, CDC has its own considerations. And one of them is that small children do not have a vaccine available. And so, again, that's a very separate issue, and we're handling that separately. And they plan to continue the masking requirement for workers, and students, and parents, and visitors in the Child Development Center.
Okay. Thank you. Can you provide guidance on a third booster, or really a second booster, for those who got the J and J vaccine?
Dr. Maggie, I think let's start with you on that one.
We expect in the next four to six weeks, a lot of new official guidance to come from CDC. Already, you've seen Dr. Fauci speculating that by the end of October, we'll have guidance for the children ages 5 to 12. There's precedent in the United Kingdom, where in mid-September, they came out with guidance for people who had their own country's vaccination, the one that's jointly produced in Sweden, known as AstraZeneca. And AstraZeneca is quite similar scientifically to the Johnson here in the United States. They're both attenuated adenovirus vaccines. They decided in the United Kingdom that rather than boost with AstraZeneca, they would boost with messenger RNA. That would be either Pfizer or the Moderna. So we don't have that guidance currently from CDC and FDA, but I anticipate, from looking at the literature, that they'll probably come out with guidance for that within the next four to six weeks. Currently, the only guidance we have is boosting with Pfizer for people who have had the first two doses of Pfizer. But I think within the next four to six weeks, we'll have guidance on Moderna. The Moderna booster will probably, at that time, be a half-dose booster. And I think we'll have guidance on the Johnson, and if they follow the United Kingdom example, it'll be Pfizer or a half-dose Moderna on top of the Johnson.
Dr. Clayren, anything you would add to that? Dr. Claiborne, anything you would add to that?
No, no, I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay.
Okay, still on the vaccine. If we receive the COVID vaccine at another location, can we receive a booster at majors or do we need to go back to the original location?
Vice President Shaw, they're welcome to come to majors. In fact, we'd encourage them to come at majors for their booster needs. The only requirement we have is you need to bring documentation of your first vaccine. Because to enable us to continue to be eligible for vaccine from the state. We have to document as we enter vaccination boosters into show me backs that were complying with these recommendations. So people will just bring their written documentation from their earlier vaccines, for example, first and second Pfizer's. We'll be glad to give the third dose Pfizer booster. We encourage that.
Yeah. And so I was vaccinated at Jordan Valley Health Center back in January and February. Got a, got a vaccine card, brought that to majors last week and they wrote in my third dose on that card. So they're happy to accommodate you right here on campus.
Thank you. It is difficult to teach wearing a mask. Was there any consideration given to a policy that would allow an instructor to not wear a mask, but still require the students to wear them in classrooms? That would allow for social distancing between the instructor and the students, especially if the instructor is vaccinated?
So we didn't, we didn't specifically talk about that. Frank, any thoughts on that question?
Well, I think our assumption was that we would continue with the teacher wearing the mask. You're correct. We didn't sit down and make a decision, absolutely. But that was my assumption.
I, I, I think frankly, I think it would be challenging for a faculty member, an instructor to not be masked while requiring all students to be masked. I think, I think compliance issues would likely increase if we went down that road. But we can put that on the list of things for our core executive committee to, to evaluate. And I appreciate that, that suggestion.
Great, thank you. How should we factor in the flu vaccine with the COVID booster? What is the recommendation for spacing them out, if at all?
Dave?
Yes, thank you. Last spring, until around March or so, CDC recommended spacing two weeks between COVID vaccine and the other vaccines. Then as they gather more data, they announced that it's okay to do vaccines concurrently with the COVID vaccine. Current guidance is that it is IS permissible to do COVID vaccine with flu vaccine on the same day. CDC gives nuance to that though, in their discussion. That if you don't have a real compelling reason to do them both on the same day. Many people might choose to separate them in time, simply because you tease out the side effects that sometimes occur. They don't all pile up on you at once. So in summary, you can do it the same day if you really want to or have a good reason to. But CDC and majors recommends you consider spacing a week or two apart. So you don't have the side effects, sore arm, fever, whatever, piling up when you fatigue so much in one day.
Again, I encourage folks to begin getting their flu vaccine. You can sign up for a flu vaccine appointment as well. The same way you sign up for a COVID vaccine. And I followed Dr. Maggie's guidance on that. Got my flu vaccine about 10 days before I got my third COVID Pfizer shot. Suzanne?
Okay. So. Oh, it jumped on me. Okay, here we go. You had mentioned the potential for a vaccine mandate because, because we are a federal contractor. Has there been any update from President Biden's announcement from the government? Or are we still waiting for OSHA's to come out with more guidelines?
Ms. Dockery?
We have received some guidance. We are still awaiting clarification and we are also all kind of poised, waiting to see what will happen with a variety of legal challenges that are being mounted to both of those executive orders.
Okay, thank you.
For example, Rachel, you might talk a little bit about, you know, some of the, if you work in HR, if you work in financial services, et cetera, in, in terms of the, the grant or the contractor piece.
Yeah. So, so what we know at this point is that we do meet the criteria to be construed as a federal contractor. And there's a variety of reasons for that, but, but that is clear. And so then the question becomes, what does that mean? We know currently that at least, at least all employees who are actively working on grants and who, or not grants, federal contracts that, that are indicated. So folks directly working on those or who are kind of working in a support capacity, specifically including human resources, financial services and legal. We have guidance indicating that all of those areas would be required to be vaccinated, not vaccinated or tested, vaccinated. Unless they qualify for an exemption under either a disability or a religious analysis. So we know that. But it, it may be broader than that, right? Because there's also language talking about all employees at covered locations. And so what we're trying to figure out now is what exactly do they mean by covered locations? Because we know at least some of our employees will be required to undergo vaccination. But it may be broader than that, such that all employees are required to undergo vaccination. But we are trying to be cautious, careful, comprehensive, and make sure that we know the answers rather than improvidently announcing policy.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to combine, kind of combine two questions and it has to do with the third dose. So it's asking Dr. Maggie to clarify, and Dr. Maggie, these will be kind of two questions here. Does teaching fall into workers with jobs that place them at high risk for COVID infection? And then will majors provide the third shot to staff and students soon who maybe fall in that category and aren't 65 or over in those situations?
Yes, we appreciate the chance to clarify that. About a week and a half, two weeks ago, CDC did expand the definitions, Vice President Shaw. And now they're approximately as follows, presidents of nursing homes, people aged 65 or older. People 18 or older who have at-risk diseases that lower their immune systems and make them more vulnerable or have at-risk conditions such as morbidity. And then also the category that you're discussing here, people 18 and older who have at-risk jobs. Certainly, teaching faculty work qualifies one as at risk with a large amount of exposure that can occur there. As do first responders, as do medical workers, as do daycare workers and a number of others. And we don't require people to prove that they meet these criteria. We have some consistent with the state guidelines in Jefferson City. Simply to self-attest. We give the guidelines in the website, ask people to examine that, and then if they believe that they make that criteria to sign up and come over and get their vaccination. But those are the guidelines and teaching certainly does qualify. And majors is giving that in accordance with that expanded definition.
You know, and so many of our staff members, particularly in the Student Affairs Office, have lots of interaction with students. You qualify. And so please, if you're a staff member that regularly interacts with students, you qualify and you should go over and feel and get the test or get the third vaccine if you would like to have it. No one's gonna give you the third degree. You can go over and sign up and get the third dose of the vaccine. We've got homecoming coming up. There's a lot of interaction with students. And so it's not just faculty members in classrooms that have interaction with students. If you have interaction with lots of students, you qualify and you can go get the third vaccine on campus.
Okay, thank you. What accommodations will be made for students that need to utilize specific resources, for example, the bear claw? But are not comfortable with a large number of unmasked patients, patrons, or puts them at health risk also using the facility?
So we have given Tom Peters in the library, the ability to designate certain areas or certain times that masking could be required. And, and so he will create a policy that generally will let the the great majority of our students that would, that are either not, that are not wanting to be masked in the library to be there while at the same time creating spaces or times where other students who believe that is important can continue to use the library safely. And so Tom Peters is doing that. And we have specifically created the ability for him to do that in this policy.
Okay, thank you. Can we continue to enforce masking on field trips?
Are we, so are we talking about in vehicles, traveling? In a field trip? David Hall, do you have any thought on that?
Certainly where we've got like within a, where it's part of a group that's going in a, in a vehicle. It would make sense to do that as part of a, if it's part of a class where they're going on a field trip. And we've had some of those doing that. So that certainly would make sense with that because it's part of the class, an extended part of the classroom in essence. If it's a, something other than that, where it's a study away or, you know, where you're traveling, that's certainly a different circumstance than if they're in a, on a field trip part of a class.
Yeah, so that, good, good, good answer, David. I like that answer. And so, so right. Man, going back to our theory that in classrooms, you can require masking. And so traveling as part of a class exercise to, to study something is appropriate to require masking in the policy. And we'll add that to our list for the core executive team to see if we want to specifically say anything in the policy about that. But it absolutely makes sense that if you're in vehicles, you're traveling together, that masking can be part of that requirement.
Okay. The next question with the updated policy, is university catering available for on-campus events specifically in academic buildings?
Well, I think university catering has always been available. Is it not, Dr. Cisco?
Yes, they're catering a number of events. I, I think the question, it might be directed specifically toward academic buildings since there has been a requirement not to eat or drink in classrooms. But, but chart rules is catering. We have a number of events happening on campus.
Frank, are you good with that? That we could hold an event in the, you know, Glass Hall atrium that would have food involved in that?
Yes, I think that, you know, we do allow masks to be off when people are eating in Einsteins or in the library area where there's food and drink available. So I think that was an extension, that's an extension of that.
Okay, thank you. Will theater majors be able to eventually go maskless for performances? Noticed ordinary days actors were maskless. And what about one-on-one vocal lessons? If both are vaccinated, teacher and student still in masks? Question mark.
So, so the academic side has the ability to carve out specific classes from the mask requirement. So for example, you know, obviously band has been carved out. You don't have to wear a, a mask if you're playing an instrument. It's impossible, right? And, and many of the choral classes, we have 100% vaccination rate. And I believe that those have been carved out as well. And so it is certainly possible to carve out. Particularly if you have a, a cohort of people who is, who is completely vaccinated. You could carve out a, and not have a masking requirement in a musical theater or theater class. Again, that is something you'll need to work through with Dean Sean Wall and then through the Provost Office. Because again, the policy, as it has always done, gives the Provost Office the ability to carve out particular classes from the masking requirement where it makes no sense for that to occur, or there are other ways to protect the students and faculty members in those classes. Just gotta go through the procedure to get that done.
Okay, thank you. Would it possible to, we have a question regarding our experts on the panel. Can we, those who are referencing, can we have them tell us maybe who they are and, and, and what their credentials are? I'm thinking probably Dr. Maggie, Dr. Claiborne, actually the three Davids, it would seem, maybe.
Sure. So why, why don't, if we presume this question is about your credentials in terms of healthcare or crisis management, why don't we, why don't we start with Dr. Maggie and then go to Dr. Claiborne and then end with Mr. Hall? Dr. Maggie?
Yes, thanks for the question. I'm a board certified internal medicine specialist. 41 years of practice experience. Director of the Health Center and been involved since before day one, actually, with the COVID epidemic. We called the first meeting on campus in January of 2020 to discuss the impending pandemic. And we've been gearing up for it ever since before the pandemic, during and since with nearly a day off. So a lot of personal hands-on experience in addition to the academic and practical training.
Okay, I'm, I'm David Claiborne. I'm basically an overeducated pest controller. I spent 20 years in the US Navy as a vector-borne disease epidemiologist or, or medical entomologist. But I do have a doctorate in public health from the Uniformed Services University of Health Sciences. And I've been the director of the public, master of public health program here at MSU for a long time, about nine years now.
And I'm David Hall. I'm the director for university safety. And prior to coming to the university here five years ago, I was in the fire service for 35 years, retired as a fire chief from here in Springfield, where I coordinated all of our responses related to it. Got my master's degree from, in business administration here at Missouri State University. And have been coordinating our response to COVID for the university for the past, you know, 18 months, as we do for any of our major disasters or emergencies.
So, so all of these folks, all three Davids also engage in significant external review and work and interaction with agencies at the federal and state and local level to bring the best information to our leadership team to make decisions. David Hall is on a call every week, for example, with the, all higher ed institutions where, where they share information and direction. And from the state, he's also on a call with all of the other education folks and, and, and gets reports every day from the Green County, Springfield, Green County Health Department. Dr. Maggie, Dr. Claiborne receive information from the CDC. I know what the CDC is gonna do before, before the CDC publicizes it, because usually one of the Davids sends it to me, hey, this is happening today. And so for example, when the CDC recommended indoor masking regardless of vaccination status, Dave Maggie sent me that. I knew it before it was announced. And so all of our team is in contact with healthcare experts around the country and around the state. And I'm involved in a healthcare meeting with the Green County Health Department and our two hospital CEOs every other week and have been for the last 18 months. And it is not a requirement to work on this issue that your first name be David. That's just a coincidence.
All right, thank you. Many financial aid opportunities require a certain percentage of attendance. Are there plans in place to protect students from being penalized for being safe or precautious when missing class for illnesses?
Right?
We have no plans to put in an attendance penalty relationship policy. Faculty have a lot of leeway on this. My encouragement will continue to be that you look at the situation and be kind and recognize that occasionally, and obviously it's low right now, but you still may have students that get quarantined. Students that missed because of the COVID relationships. And I know that's hard to separate sometimes as to what other reasons they're missing. But I think you have to give some degree of credence that we still have the pandemic that is interfering with completely normal activities.
I really want to commend our faculty for the tremendous good work they've done over three semesters to accommodate students who are, have health issues of all kinds, including isolation. to accommodate students who are have health issues of all kinds, including isolation and quarantine. Every time we've surveyed our students, we literally get hundreds, sometimes thousands of testimonials about how faculty went out of the way to help them manage through this situation. I don't have any reason to think that's going to stop this semester.
Okay, thank you. We have a number of philosophical questions that are coming through. We won't be addressing those today. If you would like to address those to the president's office, feel free to do so. Cliff will can respond to those at that time.
I promise you that I read every single email that I get. And I will answer every single email that's appropriate for me to answer. If it's beyond my knowledge, I will send it to someone else who will answer your email. It will get read.
Thank you. And just for clarification, which vaccine types are available at majors? Moderna, Pfizer, Johnson and Johnson. I know there's maybe some confusion because they're getting new names along the way.
We have Pfizer. Pfizer is our primary workhorse. Of the 12,500 vaccine doses that we've given at majors since January. About 96, 97% of it has been Pfizer. Pfizer is the one that's currently documented for the booster, for example. So Pfizer is our main go to. We do have a small amount of Johnsons for those who prefer Johnsons. And we're offering Johnsons at certain reserve times every week. So if you wanted Johnson, you can sign up for Johnson. We don't currently have Moderna. We're waiting guidance in terms of that booster that you spoke about previously. We've given a small amount of Moderna last mid-spring when we weren't able to get Pfizer. We got Moderna so we could keep rolling. So when we do get guidance of the third booster, we'll study whether it's feasible to get a small amount of third dose booster also based on the guidance. But currently the main workhorse is Pfizer, and that's what we have primarily with the small amount of Johnsons.
Okay, thank you. Last year, I think this is more of a testing question. Last year, COVID got worse around mid-October, November. What's the plan for preventing moving into the holidays vaccine or testing students as they return? Will we be doing that in the new semester?
Yeah, David, you want to talk about what the testing we're doing now and any thoughts you have in in terms of the rest of this semester? I would say we have not made a decision yet in terms of of testing students returning to live in the residence halls. We have done that the last two semesters. But again, it's hard to know the answer to that without knowing what the data is for the state of Missouri and and our area and the country. But David, talk a little bit about the testing that we're doing now.
Yeah, so right now, obviously, anybody who has symptomatic, they can go to either physician or here on campus to Dr. Maggie's. They're doing all of our symptomatic testing. We're also providing asymptomatic testing four days a week. So either plaster student union or over at the the library. So you can do that between 10 and noon. I think it's Monday through Thursday is when we're doing that. You know, I think the question becomes is how long we continue to do that. There's certainly a discussion that needs to be had. As we've seen those number of individuals taking advantage that has gone down as case rates have gone down. And frankly, is we rarely find a positive within that. I think maybe one the entire semester that's come in for that. Second thing we're doing is we're doing wastewater testing. So of each of the residence halls. And again, those numbers continue to be very low as we, you know, as we track throughout the semester. And I think that's another discussion that we're going to have to have is how long that we continue to do that. And then, you know, like the president said, is certainly too early to tell what we would do as far as return to campus testing. It was certainly a very effective strategy last winter. We also feel like it was an effective strategy this fall. But we're certainly in a very different situation even now than what we were back at the end of July and the first part of August.
You know, and that that's really why we're keeping the masking requirement for classrooms and clinics going through the end of the year. We don't know what the winter is going to bring. Sometime in the next three to four to five weeks, it is likely that we would be in a position to allow folks to be unmasked anywhere. But what we don't want to do, because we know it would be harder. If if you know, the second week in November, we could eliminate the masking requirement completely. And then three weeks later, because of winter conditions and more people being inside, all of a sudden we're back up. It becomes exponentially harder to to require masks in classroom after we've taken it off. And so we're trying to do it in chunks, right? Where our numbers are so good now, both on campus and in Green County. And they're trending in the right direction. We think that this policy will will help us continue that good course such that even when we get and in this good news, even when we get below substantial transmission rates. That that it makes sense to do it at critical points, you know, kind of like the school district has decided. You know, when you can go virtual and when you can opt into classes. And so we look at this every single day. We meet and talk about it every single week. But we think they're important sort of markers within the semester to look and say, here's what's happening now. Here's what the prognosis is for the next several weeks. Let's make decisions then for, you know, eight weeks at a time. So that's what we've done here. This will take us through the semester. In November, December, we'll be evaluating what is happening in the winter. Are cases ticking back up? Are we having a nasty flu season? And then we'll figure out what our testing policy should be for returning students. As well as do we need to to revise the masking policy further at the start of the second semester?
Okay, thank you. Will masks still be required on bear lines since it's such close quarters?
It is, and that's a federal requirement. So again, that's a decision that's been taken out of our hands. And so masking continues to be required on the bear line.
Okay, this next question, Cliff, if you have the answer, I will be very happy. In ongoing conversations with students, there's still a very large amount of misinformation circulating relating to vaccination. Other than incentivizing vaccination, what can we do to make sure every student on campus has clear, accurate and understandable information to know the importance of vaccination? Tutorials, mandatory online training?
Well, you certainly, that's a great question. And, you know, it's it is because of misinformation that a big chunk of our community has decided not to be vaccinated. Not just our students. I suspect we have employees that have decided not to be vaccinated because of misinformation or incomplete information. Certainly true in in Springfield, certainly true in our country at large. It's why we put together the COVID webpage. It's it's but but that's a let's David Hall, let's add that to our core executive team list. Are there things we could do to better educate people? What I fear is if we if we mandated everyone watch a video or everyone undergo certain training. What that doesn't do is keep them from getting the misinformation that is literally everywhere on the internet. And and so I don't know if if it, it's certainly a meaningful goal. It certainly certainly something we should, we should lean into and do the best that we can. But given the the ability for people to get information directly from sources that are frankly not reliable, it's hard to know that there's anything that we could do that that would cause people on their own to decide to be 100% vaccinated. The only thing that's going to get people 100% vaccinated is to mandate it. And we're not in a position to do that at this point.
Okay, can you please clarify, are all classrooms considered no food, no drink zones?
They are. Classroom shouldn't should be. Our policy says we should not have food and drink in classrooms. Now, are Frank and I going around to seeing if if every teacher is following that rule? No, we're not. But I would encourage people, it defeats the goal of wearing a mask. It defeats the the help that a mask provides if you allow people to eat and drink in a classroom while wearing a mask. Because you can't eat and drink in a classroom while wearing a mask.
Okay. My oldest daughter's school has had a lot of students quarantined and or have gotten COVID up to 64% of one class last week. So far, my family has been lucky. I'm vaccinated. But if my daughter gets COVID, how should I handle my classes? I want to make sure I know what to do with my students in the event of this happening. My spouse and I believe it is only a matter of time for us to get COVID in our house at this point.
Yeah, so that's the great thing about being vaccinated. David Hall, do you want to talk about what would happen if you were vaccinated and somebody in your family tests positive?
Certainly, well, we know that, you know, there are breakthrough cases where that once you've been fully vaccinated, that you can still contract COVID. What we know that is a much lower rate and certainly from serious illnesses significantly less. But as far as if you're fully vaccinated and you're exposed to someone, which means more than 15 minutes within six feet. Then you're not required to quarantine by the CDC or by the Springfield Green County Health Department. So we do not require it there. That's one of the benefits of being fully vaccinated. They currently don't give any credit as to whether you're masked or unmasked or whether both ones are. I think there's discussions going on about that right now as to whether they should or not. But you know, that's certainly the benefit of that is if you're fully vaccinated, then it gives you protection on that and reduces risk. And certainly, you know, you know, that's part of the reason we've taken some of the strategies we have within. So for example, students that within Greenwood, because we require masking for the faculty as well as for the students that are in the classroom. If they have a student that is in the classroom that's positive, then none of the others are required to quarantine from school. They're still able to come to that. And that's kind of a special exception. And frankly, they just rolled that out statewide this past week, whereas Green County had been doing that a while because they've found it so effective if they're both wearing masks.
Yeah, so I think if someone in your family, someone in anyone's family tested positive, you would want to be tested. And assuming that you're negative, you can continue to come to work and your classes can continue to function just as just as they had. That's one of the benefits of being vaccinated. You're whereas if you're not vaccinated and someone in your immediate family in which you live is positive. Well, then you've got to quarantine for 10 days. And so again, it's another incentive reason to be vaccinated.
Yeah, thanks. I might add into that is we do, you know, if you've had that close contact, even if you're vaccinated, you ought to get tested three to five days after your close contact. We have those available. The university can provide those to you. Contact university safety. You can go to the website and we can get that for you at no cost where that you can get that test as long as you're not having symptoms with that.
Yeah, again, if you're having symptoms, that's a different deal. Then we'd then you'd want to make sure that you're not contagious before you came back in.
Cliff, I'm not sure, but the other piece of that question may be because it presupposes that a minor child came down with COVID. And so the other piece of that may be, what do you do from a childcare standpoint?
Sure. And so the the answer to that, and Matt Morris, you might want to weigh in on this. But but I think the answer to that is you work with your supervisor to to figure out alternative arrangements that could include working from home, could include taking some leave, could include working different kinds of hours, etc. Matt, any thoughts on that?
Oh, you hit it. Flex time is is referencing that point. Also, then, of course, people have some have vacations sick. There's FMLA opportunity there or even our shared leave pool if people participate in that.
And on the faculty side, you would work with your department head and or dean to figure out if if that's a course that could be temporarily converted remotely, etc.
I think the word temporarily ought to be emphasized because that's that's the policy we're still working on. If if you have to move something to Zoom, you're still capable of doing it. That can be done temporarily. Not as old, this is the way it'll be the rest of this semester.
Thank you, folks.
All right, thank you. It looks like we may have been really, really successful in our promotion of the third booster. We have a question that says according to the appointment schedule, majors is out of the Pfizer third dose. When do you expect to get more?
I saw that question written, so I stepped out during one of the previous answers and asked Mr. Pat Day, our part-time tech consultant, to look into that. He says there are numerous spots open designated as third dose Pfizer. I would invite the caller, maybe they're not seeing it on their machine, to simply call majors for assistance in scheduling. And in particular, Mr. Day very graciously offered, you can even ask for him. He's here till about 2:30 this afternoon. And he'll help you personally schedule, but there are definitely spots available, he assures me as of five minutes ago.
Great.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, and this kind of goes back to your opening remarks, Cliff. Is Missouri State, do you see us heading toward mandating vaccines for students at any point in time?
I don't think that will happen this academic year. But it's hard for me to predict the future. I mean, more and more organizations and entities are requiring vaccine. I don't anticipate that happening this year. And so we'll just have to see how things play out. But but here's here's what I would tell everyone who's unvaccinated. We're moving in a direction that more and more things that we want to do to live fulfilling lives are going to require vaccination. And so again, I would encourage those students, faculty and staff, my neighbors, my family members. I got family members who are not vaccinated yet. I suspect we all do. I know David Hall does, for example. And we're two of the biggest believers in this that I know. We just get, you know, more and more things that we all do are going to require vaccination. And so let me just encourage people to get it done and and then lean into enjoying life. Don't be afraid, you know, absent you having a a condition that you should be afraid to be around people. Get the third dose, get fully vaccinated, get back to enjoying life. This virus and others similar to it are going to be with us probably for a long time. And and so we just got to do those things that we can do to to help us live a good life. Sometimes that's going to be wearing a mask. Sometime, always that's going to be vaccinated. Sometimes it's going to be deciding what activities to do or not do. But but I would encourage us to do the things we can do to protect protect ourselves. And then assuming that we're otherwise healthy, to get back into enjoying our lives. Our time on this earth is limited and it's just a shame if we're if we're not taking full advantage of that.
Okay, thank you. In our department, my faculty is paid by the Army but are teaching students daily in classrooms. Will they qualify to get their shot at majors just as a regular faculty member would be able to?
Dave, I think we give anyone that wants one a shot at majors, don't we?
Yes, sir. We give vaccinations to anybody related to the university and we even give some vaccinations to guests of the university and we have a nice relationship helping the the reserves officers and students with their medical needs. So we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. If Missouri State receives clarification that will mandate vaccination for all employees. I think this goes back to the the being a federal receiving federal grants. Is will that take place immediately or would that be a timeframe to comply?
So currently, the best information that we have is that compliance with these executive orders is required by December 8. Again, that presupposes, however, that courts do not intervene and grant a preliminary injunction, etc. So the earliest date could be December 8 and that anticipates full vaccination by December 8. Currently defined as the first two shots if it's Pfizer or Moderna.
Again, as soon as we know anything, we will share this with you. Again, I encourage people, read Inside Missouri State, check the COVID website periodically. But but this is a would be a big deal. And so when we get guidance that we're confident we know, understand and are ready to implement. We will, we will let folks know. And again, the courts could intervene and put that date off. But but we can't give up our contractor status with with the government. We have meaningful contracts with the government that are an important part of what we do at the university. An important part of our identity as the university. And so we don't have any choice but to follow the rules that they set down that are connected with our status as a government contractor.
Okay, thank you. With homecoming, and this comes from the bookstore. Okay, thank you. With Homecoming, and this comes from the bookstore. Uh, with Homecoming, we'll have a high volume of folks in the store. Can we have signage recommending but not requiring masking during these high-traffic times?
Um, I'll, we'll, we'll add that to our, uh, core executive team, uh, conversation. You know, we have, um, I, I personally, I, I guess is not scientific. I have not personally observed that recommendations to wear masks on stores are effective. But, uh, uh, but we'll, we'll add that to our list and we'll have a conversation about that, uh, this afternoon.
Okay, I think, uh, other than, uh, many of the philosophical questions, uh, we have answered just about every question. Uh, there were some repeats. And so just a reminder, as you gave Cliff, that we do have the, uh, the COVID website that will answer almost every question. And the letters, I believe, will be going out tomorrow with a link to the masking policy.
We will send an email to everyone, uh, summarizing the new masking policy and having a link to it. It is posted now. If you wanna go to the COVID webpage and, 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 and look at it immediately. Again, it kicks in a week from today. So the current masking policy goes through the end of this week. And so I will put my mask on to leave this building to go back to my office because that's the current policy, even though I'm in the alumni center. So again, everyone, we ask to continue to wear masks this week indoors. Um, we think that's, uh, that, that the break makes sense as we come back from fall break with this new policy. And with that, have a great week, have a great fall break. And I look forward to reading those philosophical emails. I may not get to them today, but I promise I'll get to them by the end of the week. Take care, everyone.